And we'll move into the millage rate public hearing. The City of Demarest and council have voted a little over a month ago to limit our public hearings regarding the millage rate to one. It certainly signaled that this council is prepared to meet the rollback rate for our millage, and so we're going to have that required one public hearing tonight. And so I'll read this. "The mayor and city council of the City of Demarest hereby announce that the millage rate will be set at a city council meeting held at 125 Ivy Street in Demarest on October 27, 2020 at 6:00 PM after a public hearing regarding the millage rate in pursuit to the requirements of OCGA 48-5-32." Is there anyone here to be heard regarding the rollback of the millage rate? Does everybody understand what the rollback rate means? Anybody to be heard? Very good, then we will address that. Where is it? On the agenda. There it is, on the first one. I'll look right past you. We'll address that, and since there are no comments regarding the millage rate, I will hereby close the public hearing regarding the 2020, the 2021 setting of the millage rate. I hereby call the October 27, 2020 meeting to order officially. We've had our prayer, we've had our pledge, and the first item on the agenda is to call this to order, which I've done, and approve the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda, council?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Appearance and public comments. Anyone here to appear for public comments? Seeing none, we do have some questions, two pages worth, from the concerned citizens of Demarest. We've yet to receive a response regarding the issue of excessive street parking on 669 Georgia Street. This issue is regarding public safety. We had three near misses in the past month. Surely we can put signs up or mark the pavement in yellow just in that area at the crest of the hill without spending a fortune on research and ordinance. We need to address this issue now. It does not have to apply to the entire city until we can get a G doc representative to assess the entire city's street structure. Couple of things, we don't need a G doc to assess our entire city's street structure, and any ordinance that we did pass would have full effect on the entirety of the city. Am I correct, Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
So if you can't set an ordinance for one particular corner, it doesn't work that way, number one. Number two, Mr. Chief Crocombe, have we had any accidents reported to your research and to your knowledge at that intersection?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There is perhaps an amicable solution that's been suggested here that perhaps a blind drive or something along those lines might be researched, but I'll leave that suggestion up to the city manager to bring to us at what might be an amicable solution regarding that particular issue. Number two, several complaints have been made about the brush that's overgrowing the sidewalks on several streets in the city, making them impassable. Will the newly hired landscaping group address this issue? As far as I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, council or Ms. Simons, we specifically bid out specific responsibilities for that landscaping company. For that bid was the overhanging brush over any of the sidewalks included in that? I don't recall that it was.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. We still have those that are capable of doing so, but let me be really, really, really straightforward and clear. Our public works have been at work seven days a week, pushing 80 hours a week for the last two weeks, given what we've had to endure. I really, I really think those guys need a break, and I think they need a breath. They also need a big pat on the back. We're a small city. We've got a great crew in all of our departments, and so major hat tip to you. We'll get to it, folks, but when it comes down to whether or not sewage is flowing appropriately or water is flowing appropriately or roads are appropriately put together, I think those take precedence. And so we'll get to them, folks. This question's for Brian Potten, but I'm going to take it for you. Brian, is there any way the city can anticipate the weakest areas of the city's infrastructure and concentrate on repairing or replacing those weak links in an attempt to avoid the water main breaks? We've assessed our system, have we not? We have a comprehensive plan that's in place that addresses those areas as we can, do we not?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Request for sidewalk maintenance and repair has been brought before the council many times, beginning five years ago. Once again, we are asking on behalf of our members when will sidewalk repairs begin? This council is a policy and procedure body. It's not a, it's not a when do we implement, who's doing what body. And so when we get time and our crews free up, I'm sure that we're going to start on those things. Ms. Simons has that as a priority, and with requests that the CCD in future with requests regarding sidewalks or overhanging brush, those are things that are taken care of at the administrative level, and Ms. Simons is more than capable of taking those questions and answering those. When you agree, Ms. Simons? Thank you. Deferred maintenance and neglect, which has been a major concern of our residents, manifested itself in a recent storm, Delta, which compromised the infrastructure of the retaining wall on 441. It remains a grave concern to our membership as it does all, that's my, as it does all. What is the city planning on doing to correct this? And look at other areas of concern in the city's infrastructure. Because I'm going to be honest with you, that concrete retaining wall's been there since before I was born. That it held up this long is probably a minor miracle. We looked at having it replaced at one point in time, and DOT said that it was going to be all on us in terms of replacing it and repairing it, and the price tag that they put on there, if I recall, was pushing $750,000 to $800,000. Was that mine in the ballpark? It was at least a half a million, and the DOT wasn't going to split those costs with us. That put it beyond our reach. I know that DOT has been reached out to. I'm going to continue to reach out to the DOT as well, and to be honest with you, I think, and I don't mind saying it publicly, that the failure of that retaining wall may be a blessing to us as Demarest residents. That is, the DOT's state highway, and that retaining wall is on their right of way, and so it is up to us and me as mayor to help negotiate how we're going to come to an amicable solution that hopefully includes the Department of Transportation taking care of their right of way. That's my hope. Item number five, we're going to address the CCD has expressed a strong opposition to the intergovernmental contract with the Haverchamp Medical Center, and that's all I'm going to say because it's an item on the agenda for us to discuss. All right. Any other public comments before we move on? Yes, ma'am?
It was brought to my attention today that the flag up at the city cemetery is written.
Yes, ma'am.
Are they going to be replacing that at any point? We've got vote for this day coming up. We're trying really hard to get ones out. I know it doesn't sound like that should be a hard thing to do, but women of the world usually tries to give us those flags. They're hit particularly by COVID, but we know that it's, that it was shredded during the last storm, and we're working on getting that.
I was going to say, if you have one ready to put up, there's no need to.
We don't have one ready to put up.
Well, and I'll tell you this, I do have a Georgia flag. It did fly over the Capitol, and for Veterans Day, I will donate that flag to fly on Veterans Day until we get a replacement for that. I think that's the least that my family can do to honor our veterans. They have paid a tremendous price, and I'll make sure that gets here if we don't have something else to fly. All right, moving on, millage rates. Folks, we've had our public, council, we've had our public hearing on the millage rate. Is there any further questions or comments to be made regarding the millage rate? Folks, this will be the seventh year in a row the City of Demarest has reduced your millage rate. It has hit the rollback rate. When we started, Sean, when you and I started back in 2014, we rolled this thing back from, I don't know, eight point?
Eight and a half.
Eight and a half, and this year's proposed millage rate is?
6.06.
6.06. During that time period of rolling back, the millage rate, we have certainly greatly increased amount of public services that are rendered to our residents. We've added over $1 million to our reserves, and we've paid down our debt by over $5 million, folks. That's service, and I'm proud of it. I'll take a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the millage rate for reduction.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes. Congratulations, Demarest.
Mayor, as part of that, the expected due date of what we've done in the past is February 3, 2021. We back it up 60 days. You know, I called with Kim. She says that she believes staff can meet that requirement to have it available on February 3.
Need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
I need a motion to set the due date for property taxes for February 3, 2021. I make that motion. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. You know, folks, it used to be that property taxes, even the city taxes, were due at Christmas time. One of the things that I vehemently objected to was that why do you have taxes due when families are struggling to try to figure out if they're going to be able to put packages under the trees or a turkey in the oven or have enough money for family to come and visit? And so I'm grateful that we've been able to move that. Generator purchase with the FEMA grant, Ms. Simons?
You all have a copy of it in your packet. We talked about it briefly. It would be an expenditure of around $40,000 from the City of Demarest. We would receive around $26,500 from the state, around $198,000 from the federal government, for a total of $264,000. And, you know, Brian and I were talking about it today, and he was saying, I sure did wish we had those generators in today. So I'm asking that we make an expenditure of $39,690 to be able to accept this money to buy the two generators.
Very good. Questions from council? Nothing illustrates the need for a generator like Hurricane Delta camping out on you two weeks ago, number one. And while I'm on that subject, and I think council will echo this as well, nothing accentuates the need for a swift water rescue team like being on state television. Chief Noll, thank you and your crews for...
I still love steak.
So what?
I still love steak.
You fix, no, more steaks. If y'all will put him on whatever streaming, they have to buy steaks for one another, but in all honesty and in all sincerity, you don't have to use it often, but when you've got residents that are sitting on rooftops that need to be out of houses and they're elderly or not, it makes a difference. Thank you for your swift water rescue team and for what you do, and thank you, Chief Crocombe, for what you and your men do as well, and women. Do I have a motion for the expenditure? As outlined by the city manager.
I have a motion to purchase.
Got a motion to purchase. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Resolution for grant application, Ms. Simons?
You all have a copy of that in there. We talked about it a couple of weeks ago when we were here. More than a couple of weeks ago, I guess it was. I'm working with Lauren Yoder with the Georgia Mountain Regional Commission. I told you, it's going to be a long-term thing. This is not an easy or quick process. We're probably looking at getting, if we are approved for the funds, we're looking at probably receiving them in early 2023. So mayor asked me what, what we would designate that money for. Number one would be bathrooms, but I hope we get those done way before then, but in case it wasn't, that would be number one. Number two, by that time, would be new playground equipment. Number three, if we were to be able to get both of those things done, would be a walking trail.
Very good. The amount that the city's expenditure again would be?
We have not actually asked for an amount. We can get up to $500,000 for a million-dollar project. Ours won't be anywhere near that. We get approved in the initial stage first, and then we go to actual an amount that we narrow down and get bids for projects and actually start narrowing down the projects. So what she and I have talked about is a project between $100,000 and $150,000. So that would make us be getting $75,000 at the most.
And I am assuming that this is a two-step process. We approve, potentially approve, this resolution, and then, once approved and those details are hammered out, it comes back to council to determine whether or not the amount is approved and the projects are approved.
That's right. They won't accept our application at all unless we, y'all pass this resolution.
So we're not, we're not officially binding the city until stage two, is what I'm hearing.
That's exactly right.
Very good. Any questions from council? Here none, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion. Let me go ahead and accept the resolution.
I've got a motion to approve the resolution. To move forward. Second. Okay, those, any further discussion? Here none, those in favor? Okay, passes unanimously. Hospital Medical Center. Haverchamp Medical Center security contract. Chief Crocombe, I want to, we have a lot going on, Mr. Williams, and so I want to introduce you to everyone, folks. In fact, is if you'd like to leave us off tonight or not, makes no difference where you tag in, but folks, I'd like to introduce Tyler Williams. Tyler Williams is our chief executive officer for Haverchamp Medical Center. He's been a longtime employee there. He's a friend, and he's, he's here to discuss this particular intergovernmental agreement. So Chief Crocombe, do you want to start? Tyler, you want to start?
It doesn't matter to me. I mean, I can speak on behalf of hospital first. I don't know if you want to address this way or to the...
Just dress this way and be, turn this thing around.
So I have been at Haverchamp long enough to where we've had different security contracts. We've either done it in-house, we've had our engineering staff do it, or we've had the Demarest Police Department do it, and I can say that 2020 has really showed us the necessity to having this partnership and how important that it is. In fact, so much that when a lot of my emergency room staff realized that I was going to be coming here tonight, they said, you have to make sure that we keep this intergovernmental agreement because we feel safe having the Demarest Police Department there on site with us. I can tell you that the coronavirus is real, but I can also tell you the exacerbation of mental illnesses associated with social isolation is also real and on the rise, and therefore people aren't making logical decisions and some are going into acute psychosis, which normally ends up in a 10-13 status in our hospital. Our staff feels much safer knowing that we have a security contract with the Demarest Police Department. And Chief Crocombe has actually helped us by providing us data that show when we actually need to have police presence because initially we thought a seven-to-seven coverage worked best, but after looking at the data and looking at when we were actually receiving calls, we needed to shift those hours so that we were covered appropriately. We would not have known that if he didn't lead his group by data. And so I am just very thankful for the partnership that we've developed over the past, I believe, three years now, and I ask that you please seriously consider continuing that partnership under the renegotiated terms.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Chief?
Mayor, I'd just like to echo Mr. Williams' sentiments. I'm in favor of it. Joey and I, we tried to, we worked the agreement at the request of several council members to run everything through the city. I just leave it up to you. It has been a great partnership, and I'd like to continue.
Mayor, make sure that the mayor and council have the recent version of CTO Friday.
You don't have that recent version in your packet. You have the old version and the first draft. You don't have the most recent version.
Ms. Holmes, would you outline the most recent version for us, please?
Well, when you get to compensation, well, we did go to the hours. We moved that 12 hours between 2:00 PM and 2:00 AM. That was based upon the information that was provided to the parties during these discussions. It is only Demarest officers. The compensation is $112,000, total amount paid to the city.
Very good. Questions from council?
My view is that Agenda A on the agenda design is supposed to terminate IGA. So my thought is that is what we should do first. Since we reviewed this in August, there was correspondence, went back and forth between the city and the hospital, with termination, and there was an acceptance, mutual acceptance on both sides. Since then, there has been a negotiation which has led us to this point. And Mr. Holman pointed out that our executive meeting was not enough. In other words, we did not call for a vote at the end of that meeting, so therefore our contract with the hospitals is still in force. So for us to do anything, we first have to terminate the contract that we have.
That's called for, and if you approve this new agreement, it supersedes.
Right, but that would be the discussion of the new agreement after the termination of the contract.
Now, if you decline to terminate it, that's right, and then you would have a new contract that's been presented that I've just outlined.
But our agenda is, A, vote to terminate the contract, and then have a discussion.
If I can have the floor, please. It's, I don't think that anyone can have an appropriate conversation and an appropriate decision without having the conversation preceding the decision. To walk in and just simply have a vote on whether or not we're going to terminate an IGA without talking about the benefit to the hospital, without talking about the negotiations that have occurred, there has been great leeway and some given takes, some back and forth regarding those two entities, and I think that needs to be on the table as council just determines whether or not they're going to move forward with a termination or a consideration for a new contract. And, you know, I've talked to Dulce Ariel today. I got received two different emails, so I can wait and talk about those, but I prefer to talk about those.
Well, my view also is that we're having an election, and there's some liability issues in regard to all of them, and I'm not completely comfortable with all the liability issues to move the city forward, and my idea would be terminate this contract we still have until the end of the year because old one is still in force. We will have a new council. The new council will be here. It can be sworn in, and then a full council can view this and have a full council's opinion to move the city forward.
There's an email from Advantage Insurers, which is the carrier for travelers. It is the one that covers the city. This email says the following, "Good morning. It does look like the city's officer would be covered under the city's workman comp's policy since the city is being paid directly $60,000 annually for use of their employee, and the city is providing the after-hours assignments to the hospital. The city is still in direct control of these officers, and all that has happened, all that has really happened is the hospital has agreed to pay the hourly wage for the officers rather than the city pay those wages for the assignment of the officer. In the newly negotiated contract, all funds, I understand, are coming to the city, so they'll all funnel through the city. They will be paid city employees, and so, but workman's comp in a contract like this as outlined by law is different than a workman's comp for a subcontractor in non-governmental entities, if I'm, if I'm understanding."
Again, this is a diversion from the executive meeting in August when the chief came to the council and said he didn't want this anymore, and the city manager agreed, and it was discussed, and at that time, at the end of that meeting, there were emails that went out from this council to the hospital stating that this agreement was not going to be in effect. Both of those were accepted, and they would have been valid if there was not some negotiation in between.
First of all, the contract specifically states that any termination of the, of the agreement requires that the city notify the hospital to the CEO with a specific post office box on that contract. It was notified by an email from the city manager. That does not meet that standard of the contract. Am I correct, Mr. Holmes?
Right, but the meeting of the mind of the executive committee at that time was to terminate the contract. Perhaps Ms. Simmons would not have sent out an email, and it was accepted. So therefore, the proper thing to do is to terminate the contract since that was the wish of the council, and it has been superseded since then.
Was it?
And then the discussion for a new contract can take place.
Wishes of the council need to be taken as a vote in a public meeting, so I just want to make sure that's clear, and there was no vote by the council. You had that opportunity, and that was not undertaken.
Which was understandable. That was August, and you had till November 1, and here we sit on October 27, but if you're going to terminate this contract with the idea that we expect our partner in this agreement to continue negotiations, and I strongly encourage you to get somebody else other than me to lead those negotiations, as I was under the impression that, based upon the emails I received, that you wanted a proposed agreement that contained these terms, and we've achieved that, which is unfair to our partner to say, we're going to wait and decide sometime after November 1, because they've got to run a hospital.
I understand, and also on the email that went back and forth, it was indicated that the hospital was invited here to the council to make their presentation and have a discussion, but these discussions have been hammered out without the council, but within individuals. Well, so now it's presented to the council generally for a vote. We're going to have to do it this way. We're going to have to do it that way.
Make a motion, somebody.
We don't have to do it that way.
No, but make a motion.
Hey, what do you think about it, Robin?
I'm for it. There were some reservations initially, but we got all that worked out with how things operate day to day.
Well, I don't want to give the wrong impression. I thought it too, but I don't want to assume all of that responsibility. I feel much better if we have four seats up here and everybody is split two and two, then the mayor can make the decision. If it's three against, then we have three and one that don't think it's a good idea. So I'm not against the proposal. I'm just against the timing that we don't have a full council.
How the hospital will run.
The agreement stays until the 31st.
Somebody make a motion.
Let's get it over. I made a motion to terminate.
I got a motion to terminate.
To terminate the contract.
The 2017 contract. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. I think it would be a grave mistake. I think it's a disservice to the residents that Haverchamp County Medical Center serves not only in the City of Demarest, but not only in our county, but into the other counties that we absolutely serve. I've got a motion and a second. Those in favor for terminating the Haverchamp Medical Center contract, please raise your right hand. Okay, that's two for those.
So we're going to stay with the old contract?
That's, that's why we vote. I got two, I got two, I got two that are for terminating the contract. All those against terminating the 2017 contract, raise your hand. Boom. The measure fails. Item B, consideration to have a new contract.
I'm sorry, you don't get to vote unless there's a tie, sir. You're the mayor.
He's got to make the third vote. I've got to make the third vote, and I'm not going to discuss it with you.
Not according to the charter. You are not a voting member of the council.
You are not authorized to speak.
You only vote if there's a tie. There is no tie. Ask your city attorney.
You have to have three votes. We do.
There is no requirement for three votes. The requirement is for a majority, and it's two out of three.
You need to read the charter again, sir. Moving on, and you're not recognized. Measure fails. Next item on the agenda is, because he's wrong, the consideration of a new contract. So now can we move forward with the consideration of the new contract?
No, but I'm going to vote against it.
That's fine.
You are out of order, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Crocombe, no more albers, please, from someone directing towards council, please. Thank you. Again, do I need to read the fact that Advantage Insurers, the ultimate carrier, says there is no liability and that the employee definition, which we're now funneling all of the funds from Haverchamp Medical Center to the City of Demarest, so it's no longer an issue of whether it's a workman's comp following, a contractor following the employer, but they met the employer, employee status of that as well. Further conversation?
Yes, I'd like to make the point that after we have a election, and we have a full council, that these things can be brought up and amended at that time.
Further discussion? Our hospital needs security. They've asked for it tonight, and they can't wait on us.
Their hospital still has security under the old contract.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we go with the new and improved contract with the hospital.
Got a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Holmes, I cannot second.
No.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do I have a second? Have no second. Motion dies for... Have no second. Motion dies for lack of a second. Do I have another motion?
So we're at a, we're at a, we canceled the contract, the original contract, or we not canceled?
We not canceled the original contract.
That makes no sense.
Exactly.
Doesn't make any sense. Why would you, why would you put us in a liable position like that? And with the old contract, we are liable.
We're not liable. I think that the attorney said it, the insurance company has said it. I don't know how many times we have to say we don't have any liability there. We are a government entity. Can you explain, please?
As long as we're, but they're paying through, they're paying, the hospital is paying with the old contract.
Can.
And I still, you know what, you're going off of what this person said or that person said, but I haven't seen a letter from Travelers. And I'm not against this. This is not what I'm against. I mean, Robin showed me videos earlier. It's definitely, it's a need, but we've just got to do it the right way, and.
Can I show you the email? You said you haven't seen one. Can I show it to you? I think you've received it, but.
Yeah, and it's from Dulcie.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the insurance agent. It's not Travelers' underwriters.
It is the underwriter. This is a letter from the underwriter. I talked to her today.
If we do it the way Chief Crocombe, you know, I mean, you know, we're, I think, recovered, but that's not the issue. It's not going to pass, and you're going to leave the old one. It's like someone's here digging their feet in the sand and, like an anchor, and it's like you're fighting over something that can be, it can be worked out, but.
I'm not digging in. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Does the current agreement offer the chance to renegotiate without having to terminate it? Because I believe it's fair to say that the hospital wants a fair agreement for all. We don't want a one-sided agreement. We don't want to be taking advantage of you. We don't want you taking advantage of us. But we also do not want to bind you to an agreement that you do not want to be.
So is there, and in that contract, is there an extension?
We can always amend it. If you go with the old agreement, we could amend this agreement, amend that agreement to be this agreement. But if you terminate it, then you have no agreement, and it runs to the end of the year.
So we're more than amenable to the best, just for each party, just a multiple discussion. After the full council here, so we know what we're doing.
John, can you push your mic up?
Yeah.
It's common.
I would be agreeable to discuss amendments to the current contract if we leave it in place, and we can come to an agreement, a mutual agreement to either continue it or to cancel it. The only thing that I am asking is that we at least get a 60-day notice that we will have to get additional security in place should you vote to not continue the agreement.
I have no problem doing what.
Best for the hospital.
Can we listen to Mr. Shawnee? He's raising his hand.
Sure.
May I respond to, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have looked at the old contract as well as the previously proposed contract, and the problem I have with the place where the council is right now is that there's a November 1 deadline for termination staring at us. It's a few days away. And as I understand from Mr. Holman's emails, the proposed contract, even as revised, which we haven't seen, is yet to be approved by the hospital's attorneys. Isn't that right, Mr. Williams? You're still, like you're here.
No, Mr. Shawnee, that's just not, sorry.
We're going to do it. We're going to do it. We're going to do it. This was sent out Friday at 5:00. For the past two weekends, we have gone back and forth over this agreement. One of us stood up when this meeting was canceled in October, first email. You've got some issues with this agreement that we're trying to address, and you need to make doggone sure we don't let that slip. When we tried to have a special call meeting, again, one of us said, "We need to address this. We need to bring the hospital in to talk." There's the hospital. Their lawyer has been communicating with me as lawyer for the city, and he has sent me the information.
No, sir, he has got, he's got the floor.
He interrupted me.
He is the city attorney. Please sit.
You have no place at the table. You're not on the council. You're not the attorney. You're a member of the audience.
I asked for permission to speak, and then I was interrupted by.
Mr. Holmes, please continue.
Because you gave him, you gave him bad information. You said you have not seen this agreement.
I didn't say that. I asked him, is he authorized to sign it?
His lawyer has sent it to me saying, "Yes, they're authorized, and this is what they agreed to."
If the council were to agree to this revised agreement, is this going to be the end of it? Or does your lawyer still have to review it and make revisions to it?
The hospital authority board is well aware that I'm here tonight to discuss this, and it is also ran through our attorney.
I don't think that's a done deal, and in the meantime, the November 1 date will come and go, and then it'll be too late to terminate.
We've already.
That's the problem.
As we discussed earlier, when the full council feel we're more than amenable to talk with the hospital and do what's best for the city, and when we have a full council, and we would not leave the hospital 60 days without coverage, and it needs an extension, we would be amenable for myself. I've not been privileged. All this communication between the attorney.
I understand, and if it is, if it would make the council feel better, they might want to pass or make a motion that, because if I understand this contract right, you have to let us know on November 1st, so it can terminate by December 31st. Maybe we want to rework that clause so that you can, at any day, we can provide a 60-day notice.
Mr. Williams, can I interject here, please?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that this council voted to term, considered a motion to terminate the 2017 contract with the hospital authority, Haversham Medical Center security contract. That vote failed. For, if, as the contract now stands, okay, without anything else that's done, the contract automatically renews. I would love the opportunity with a newly seated council to sit down at some point in early November and make sure that we're all on the same page in the discussion of what those renewed contract parameters look like. Would that be appropriate?
I found out.
Very good. Chief, you go with that?
Sure.
So I've got a, I've got a motion to consideration, consider the new contract. I had one motion, no renewal. Do I have a second motion on the table? For the consideration of the new contract.
We don't have to have a motion. That, Mr. Mayor, because the contract is in force, and after the new council is seated, we can go and negotiate with the hospital.
Let the record reflect that council did not vote for the consideration of the new contract, and therefore, the 2017 contract and its parameters remain in effect. Under new business, number one, the order.
Can I, can I list that as having table?
No, I.
Or no?
I'm.
Has that, has it been tabled?
Can we table that? Is that what we're doing?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
I will take.
Table the consideration.
I need a motion to table, I need a motion to table consideration of the new contract.
I make that motion.
And a motion to table and a second. All those in favor? Okay, passes unanimously. Under new business, the order of the L-ME contract, Ms. Simons.
We had two bids on that. You all have a copy of that in your packet. Yeah, just with the bid opening, there were two bids. The winner of the bid was Garrett paving with a bid of fifty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and I'm asking that you all officially award that bid tonight.
Very good. Any questions from council? Hearing none, then based on the city manager's recommendation, and anything you need to add, Mr. Holmes?
No.
Okay, we have, can I have a motion to award the L-ME contract?
Is, I got a question.
Sure.
Is, I guess the, the Garrett paving, I guess they're fully insured.
Yes, actually, they won, they did it last year. They won the bid last year. And we did what?
We'd get in trouble, isn't it?
Yes, they have to submit all that stuff when they submit, and I can get back to you and cancel them.
New business, we do that, it's not mature, like that contract.
Well, okay. Do I have a motion to award the L-ME contract for the paving of our annual paving through GDOT funds coupled with city funds?
I make that motion.
Got a motion?
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor? Okay, the L-ME contract is awarded. Appraisal contract proposal for the 365 road board. For those of you that are unaware, let me catch you up that part of our, a major hallmark of our splosh is coming to a close for our last splosh. We do need an appraisal done for our 365 road board for the sewer line extension that goes across 365. That 365 extension opens up on the, that would be the east side of 365, particularly the corner of Demeris-Mountory Highway and 365 on both corners to potential development with the addition of that sewer there. That's what this is pertaining to. We approved much of this in the past, but we do need to approve the appraisal contract. Mr. Holmes, anything to add?
No, you should have a copy of it, eight thousand dollars, nine parcels. There will be some changes to cause when the engineer ran into some issues with Department of Georgia power. That will affect, and actually, working in our favor, we'll only need seven parcels. But I'd like to move forward with this or get the appraisal broken in order to proceed with any condemnation actions. You'll need these approvals.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Holmes or for Ms. Simons? You know, I do want to thank Metro Appraisals. David Griffin is who you've been dealing with. Is that, is that correct? He's had this ready to go since late September, I do believe.
Yes.
And he's been extraordinarily patient and is agreeable to continue under the same terms to get this job done. Do I have a motion to approve the appraiser?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Is there anything that we need to go into executive session for?
I'd like to, I'd like to say something.
Sure.
Because it's really this hospital contract. I think we need the full council. I think we need the full council here to be able to make that judgment. As you can see, like tonight, with the way we're running, you know, things, it's just, it's just not operating correctly. You can't, you know, you can't make a vote in one way or the other. So it's not that, it's not that I'm against the contract. It's, it's just not the right moment. So if we can, you know, I just want to make that clear because it'll, it'll work like, you know, we're just, we're not for it. We just want to make sure everything's correct with that, and that's all, you know.
Very good. Thank you, council. Anything else for the good of the body? Thank y'all for coming tonight. Yes, ma'am?
I want to say one other thing. Several people contacted me apparently before my time, or maybe Sean, I guess, was sitting on council. There were some drawings, and I was told that Ben Ternacy had done them for that wall for a possible, at one time, maybe a possible T project. Several former councilmen called me and said, you know, there's some drawings somewhere. I couldn't find them. I talked with Ben today. He said that they didn't do them, but he referred me back to.
Was that the streets game?
They considered it, I think, for streets game, but it was too expensive. And so he referred me back to a firm in Gainesville that he thinks has those drawings. I'm trying to track those down, not because I think we really need the absolutely usual, but I think it might be a place to start to look at those. So we are trying to get those, and as soon as I have some news or whatever, I'll bring it to you. But we're not, I'm not just absolutely ignoring that wall.
Right, you know, and hopefully, we've got some good news coming to us next week when we meet. Next week, we meet on the 3rd, on Election Day, at this location, and so we look forward to seeing you here. Good luck to each one of you candidates, and ask everyone to please honor the people that have fought, bled, and died for our country to give us the rights that we have in order to vote. That's extraordinarily important, so honor them in some way, shape, or fashion, be it early voting, be it absentee voting, or be it in person. But we ask you to do your civic duty. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
You got a motion? I got a second. Those in favor, okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you, folks.